One it is.
It's F. Oh, is it for the solar farm?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Is that the court's pleasure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, well we'll go ahead. Each person wants to speak, got five minutes to speak on this. Well, actually, yeah, you do, but we'll start with Mr. Warren since you was the one that wanted this on the agenda, we'll start with you.
Our purpose here today is to inform you guys about some of the problems of solar farms. I have in my hand 152 signatures that are against giving them abatements.
You've got the mower here.
Yeah, maybe 155, all taken share signs that are against it. There's several of the landowners here today that are against it and, I mean, their properties are aligned to the problems that might happen whenever they come in. We understand that you guys don't have the authority to keep them from coming in, but you do have the authority to not give them abatements.
Mr. Warren's not even asking us because we're not giving it to them. We got told.
If they ask, that's what we're here today to inform you guys of some of the problems and hopefully you wouldn't give them abatements if they asked for them anytime. And we do appreciate, or I do appreciate, all the help we've had. These 155 signatures were gathered in a short time and we know there's a lot more that would if we just went out and searched. Because living next to them is not a good thing, we think. So, that is why we're here and that's what we're asking for and hope you guys would consider it. And I know these people here that are in the court today would appreciate your consideration on it too. And I do appreciate all the help that these people have given. It's been a traumatic experience if you live on a place, I lived on my place for 70-plus years, been a homestead. If they put one right close to me, I don't want to happen. So, anyway, that's what we're asking for and I appreciate your time and the consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Just to address that, Mr. Warren, I don't think we're going to give an abatement to anybody.
I appreciate that.
We, personally, after looking at the two that were given back in the early 2000s, I can tell you that they were not beneficial to Eastland County and ended up costing the taxpayers of Eastland County more money than the law.
I appreciate you guys.
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Rain saying that and obviously, I guess in this situation, I don't mind sticking my neck out a little bit and speaking for the court, but, I mean, all you guys are welcome to speak or whatever, but I'm not inclined to approve this either. I don't think.
I don't think they'll even come ask, to be honest with y'all.
Yeah, I mean.
Because after the VP bunch or whoever bought VP out down there come in, we have, and we had our meeting with them back a year, year and a half ago, we've never been approached for another since then. Because they were pretty much told no and so nobody else has ever asked.
And that's, hey, and that's always, I mean, that's always, we, obviously, you said that, we don't have the authority or the ordinances to keep them out, but I don't, there's absolutely no motivation for us to give them a tax abatement at all. So, I mean.
And in their words, when they come to us and they were asked from this table, are you, is this going to stop you from doing what you're going to do, and they said no. So, I mean, right there tells you why, why even consider it if they're going to do it one way or another, why give them any more of a break than what they already get.
Some of them want to hear what Mr. Warren's going to say, I figured.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was Mr. Warren.
Yeah, that was Mr. Warren.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, don't get me wrong, I am not and I appreciate Ronnie saying that, I'm not trying to cut anybody off, I'm just telling you, we can shortcut this deal if you guys got something else to do because we're not doing it.
Yeah.
So, and I'm one vote, but like I said, I don't, I don't see anybody on this court doing it. So, Mr. Bussey, would you like to, who's Mr. Bussey?
Well, I will say a couple of things, short and sweet. We know that electric cars, when they go get on fire, we're having to dig holes to put them in because we can't get the batteries out. And we also know that an electric car, when the battery goes out, it costs more to replace the battery than it did to buy a car. And you can relate that over to solar, okay? There are hotspots, they create hotspots in the area that you're in and nobody really knows what the fire issues are going to be. If one ever gets on fire, is it going to be like a solar, is it going to be like a car, you can't put the stupid thing out, you have to dig a hole and bury it? And that makes a hazardous waste spot alongside the highway, which that's another deal that you have to deal with, so there's so many unintended consequences beyond the fact that they're getting, that they'll never pay out and if they're all being paid for off our tax dollars. And other than that, I'll get out of your hair before I start.
Mr. Bussey, I can assure you, the only electric car I've got is the one my little four-year-old rides around in. Ms. Hayes, would you like to address the?
Y'all have already addressed it, thank you.
Okay. You bet. Ms. York?
Just briefly, I would like to say that I appreciate what you've just said, that this is not something you have an intent to do or an interest in doing. I appreciate that y'all have shown an interest in the health of the county and protecting that and we do see that there are issues with these electric farms, solar farms. So, I appreciate that very much and encourage you to continue with that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thought you were going to tell me you appreciated me getting my four-year-old granddaughter a dirty electric car. If I could have got her one that was gas, I would have done it. Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I just got this information back in March and it, it looks appealing because it's saying you're going to be a millionaire. I've got a little property out there, it used to be Wesley's, but he was telling me about all these hazardous effects of a solar farm and I drilled a water well, got a good water well, got a big tank and I don't want pollution coming in there, you know, I want any, if that solar farm is close enough, you know, there's several hundred acres where that just thongs right down to my pasture and I would either have to consider settling it and getting away from it or, you know. And a lot of these other guys here are landowners, and I see some of them that are, and they're concerned because they've got a cattle operation or whatever and if they put those solar panels out there, we're in trouble, you know, with their cattle operation or whatever, you know. And if it's showing a clue to the ground, we sure don't want it. But that's, that's kind of what, and y'all told me what kind of what I wanted to say, I wanted to hear. And I talked to Ronnie the other day, Midwest, they talked about it, there may not be nothing y'all can or any of us can do. If those people have already leased that land to them, you know, then they come out there tomorrow and start breaking ground, we can, but we just thought it'd discourage them if y'all won't give them a tax abatement, y'all can tell us what we want to hear.
Yes, sir. I don't think it'll discourage them because, uh, giving them a tax abatement for Eastland County don't mean nothing compared to what, as Mr. Bussey said, the other tax dollars they're going to get for putting a solar panel on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's federal, that's federal money, that's not county money.
Yeah.
We do appreciate everybody's interest and I don't know, Ms. York over there, she got, what, eighty-something signatures? You know, I don't, it's, it's just something to tell us that they're against solar farm in southern, I guess, anywhere in the county, I don't know. I think there's another one, Ronnie was telling me back over toward Hokey, but that's not a very populated area over there, but if they put one out by Wesley's house, you know, those things just go, I've never seen one, I've seen pictures of them, and they just go from over and on and you can't use that land for nothing else.
No, and I think you were here Thursday when I asked that question, because I was curious about that question on the appraisal side of it, when does it come out of agricultural exemption back to full market value and that's, you know, he said this, when they break ground for that solar farm, you lose your A exempt for that profit. It goes back to full market value and I don't.
Did anybody hear that?
Yeah.
You got to tell us.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
But these, and they're people, they're getting this stuff here and it's bottom value here of a million and nine hun- nine thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
You know, and people's looking at that. Yeah, after 25 years, but some people are looking at that and this is on 47 acres, so you can imagine.
Yes.
If they got two or three hundred acres, that figure would go way up.
They've got people hired to do nothing but go around and sell you that too.
Well, the guy that brought me this, put it in my mailbox. That's Aaron Gorman, he took my mailbox, didn't help it, nowhere, he just opened the mailbox and shoved it in there. Well, that's, that's a good. Alright, well, that's all I need to say, I appreciate y'all's time and we know where you stand.
Well, I didn't, I didn't think time shares were a very good idea either, so you just write me down for that, but I appreciate, I appreciate the input from the public and obviously, we want to be, you know, we want to be responsive to, to y'all's concerns, but this is one of those things that we are, we are all on the same page, you know, thank y'all for the work. I might have, could have saved you some signature time if you'd have just called and said, hey, where do you guys stand on that? Because we're, we're not, and, and going back, and I know most of y'all know this, but the county only has limited authority to regulate local issues and we're a subdivision of the state, so the state tells us what we're able to do. And the state has given us absolutely no, no authority to regulate this or do anything else, which is a little annoying, as a new judge, you would think that that would be something that we could do, so, but anyway, I'll quit talking, so.
Well, and, and on the side of where, for, over where we're dealing with on this side with the wind farm, the, the state actually routed them down my county roads over there without calling or asking because they don't want them to tear up their highway. And there's nothing I can do to recoup damage expenses, we as the county sue them. I mean, but they, they called me and they said, we just want to let you know, the state routed us to your roads, not, we didn't pick this area, they, this is how they told us we had to go. So, and then they limit what we can do to them when they tear them up.
Yeah. The county takes the brunt of that, all of that. Well, you guys are welcome to stick around or you guys are welcome to go get coffee or whatever you need to do, I mean.
Appreciate y'all.
Happy, happy to see you guys here.
Appreciate everybody coming and helping us out on that.
And we'll keep, we'll keep monitoring it from the county side as well.
We, we come out with, James not coming out there for a fire, we've got to break ground, no jeans.
A little short. I'd like to turn everything on.
Yes, yes, yeah.
How do we meet you? Yeah, I'm James Crenshaw.
Yeah, I knew you were, I guess, made your granddad. These and that mother?
No, no, no.
You're not kidding?
No, not that, not that Crenshaw.
Okay, now I got it. Had you mixed up, but anyway, they're good people too.
Yeah, that's a good name.
Yeah.
Thank you for presenting.
I know you're on time. And y'all did a good job, I appreciate it. Got to ask a question quick. All these signatures, they make a copy for people that's on, you know?
No, no. Are you on the agenda?
Six or eight feet, so there's several signatures.
Yeah, we're not going to get that far today. But I'm glad you were here because I actually figured about half of them were for the next item down on that. Yeah. No, we try not to.
That's good. Alright. Thank you for being patient, let's go. I didn't call about the burning van, but I would like to say that we keep that thing on, myself.
I believe so.
I don't think there'll be any action on that.
Can't think we're setting fire down there.
Well, that's what she gets for.
Yeah. Trying to clean up the neighborhood.
You know, my wife's coming back, she went to the, went to the four-year-old granddaughter when I was talking about, first day of school.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you.
Sheriff, do you have a 9/11 update?
Nothing to discuss, Judge.
Okay, why'd we have you on the dirt schedule? Uh, C, Johnny Signs, ABP Treasury Management Specialist, to present First Financial Bank Purchase Card Program, Ms. Key.
He's not here. Okay, we can skip that one.
Okay.
I'll just tell you, Johnny Signs contacted me and the court gave permission a long time ago to pursue the purchasing card through the state. We started switching software about that time and I have not done it. First Financial Bank contacted me, they have a purchasing card program, but he was going to present today, so.
They don't rebate the taxes.
They don't rebate the fuel tax? Okay. Okay.
That's all I know is they don't rebate the fuel taxes. I know he had emailed you and, and Lisa, asking if he still wanted them to come today.
Oh, I didn't see it.
You want to table it? Have them table?
If they don't rebate the fuel tax.
Unless you wanted to use them for everything other than fuel.
Well, we could do that, but.
But they don't rebate the taxes, so it wouldn't be advertised.
Okay, uh, let's table it and see if we can get him on the next meeting.
I don't think we need to motion, do we? Just to table it? We're just going to take it?
Yes.
We do need it? Okay, alright, we'll motion both. Two commissioners on the end. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, motion, item is tabled and they don't, they don't rebate? The fuel tax. Okay, I just, I just needed to put something on there. Okay, D, discussing, consider allowing JP Office to purchase a new keyboard and a mouse out of the technology fund, Judge Quinn.
I was, basically, it's just, from my understanding, it's one of those carpal tunnel keyboards and she does a lot of typing, she's also starting to get a lot of wrist and hand issues, so we're just trying to make her plug along for another four years.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Rain second, my Mr. Crenshaw, all those in favor, say aye.
And.
What?
Go ahead. I'll do it for the record.
Yeah, I've got it, that's, I have, I have that on D.
Okay. And, just for the record, that's going to be paid from 040-455-035600, computer equipment and there is budget.
Okay. I have no idea what that number is.
You have a copy of his budget.
I know, but I could have wrote it down up there.
Yeah, five, four.
Okay, we're ready to discuss the, uh, let's see. Thank you, Judge. I thought you were going to tell me you had carpal tunnel. There was a, uh, Brad, were you here for?
He's here for budget.
Okay.
At the very last, the very last thing we need to talk to or talk about.
I'm, I'm with you, I'm with you. Uh, we may, we may hold him.
Bottom of the list.
We may hold him over to lunch and. Alright, do we go ahead and, do we want to do it, go and do F and G or do we want to wait until we discuss his issue? His, I mean, I know what he's going to talk, what he's here for, but what's the pleasure of the court?
I'd just say this, wait until we get to the budget to talk about the tax rate.
Well, do you want to move the budget workshop to?
We can.
Right now and?
That means he gets to talk faster and, I mean, I'd really like for him to sit out there and wait.
Okay, budget discussion is needed, we're going to go ahead and move, we'll go ahead and move to number five at this point.
Well, you, I can do the same thing right there. Now you got a gun, girl.
Come on, kids. Don't, I've got four corners here.
Before you start talking, I imagine you're talking about the capital prosecution. Um, if you will look at page.
You don't want to, you don't want to hear from him first?
Well.
Because this, he, I think he's got a short presentation. I believe.
Page 20 of your budget.
Okay.
What's on page 20?
Um, I have added Department 4770, District Attorney Senate Bill 22 budget and Department 4780, District Attorney Capital Prosecution.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm trying to get to 20.
Okay. You need one of those rubber fingers?
If you would allow me, I want to talk to Mr. Llewellyn down here, he's in district court.
Down in the bottom rung.
He's in the bottom rung.
No, it's, it's blue, a lot of this is blue on the screen and so it prints light.
Yeah.
P-A-U-L. L-E.
He's in district court, he is not going to enter his cell phone.
That judge would be even more narrow-minded than I am about that.
She has this footage and this, the next one.
Hey, from the, sorry to bother you, but I'm the commissioner's court, can you run up and see if Paul can get around here, I'm already at the table a little quicker than I thought it'd be. Thank you, thank you. He's a good guy on this, but, gentlemen.
No, that was just, yeah, we have both them budgets.
Aside from the budgetary issues that arise from the subject matter, I'm here to somewhat brief the court on our pending, uh, potential capital murder case. And I believe that it would be appropriate and advisable for the court to go into executive session for that briefing portion, uh, under the, uh, discussion with the attorney regarding legal matters that will affect the court and its budgetary impact. Then certainly, the discussion about my, our budget proposals will be opened to the public.
Do you want me to stay or go?
I want you to stay.
Okay. Is there, are we good with doing that now then, or are we waiting on Paul?
I'll go, I'll, we'll wait on Paul.
Alright, we'll wait on Paul, so let's go ahead and have a quick discussion about Senate Bill 22. And how that affects, Loretta, can you give us a, just an overview of how that affects the district attorney's office and also how that affects the sheriff's office?
Yes.
And then we can, the sheriff is here too, so.
Senate Bill 22 was put into place by this legislature, basically, the state is going to be funding sheriff department or sheriff and jail departments and the district attorney, the prosecution. The grant is for $350,000 for sheriff and jail and $175,000 for the district attorney.
Let me just clarify, just in case one of the commissioners, when she's talking about the sheriff, he, that's his department. So, that's him, the deputies, everybody.
As well as the district attorney.
Yeah, and it's the same with the DA's office, but anyway.
Their offices. Um, so what I did was I went ahead and added Department 4770 on page 20 and then Department 5670 on page 33 for the sheriff. Ring, Paul.
Hey, Paul.
For the amount of the, well, I actually need to add more to the sheriff's, because it's $350,000, I was supposed to put the difference in equipment.
Paul, are you, do you need to get back pretty quick or?
If we could.
Okay.
Right in the middle of docking.
I apologize and I apologize to the court, but let's go ahead and discuss the DA's office so we can get Mr. Llewellyn back up to the district court. Not that he's that, this anxious to get into county court, but we're gonna, we're gonna give him a break on that.
We appreciate it, man. Since we're already into the Senate Bill 22, I just tell, tell the court that Mr. Llewellyn and I both have been doing research on what's available, as I think the court's probably aware that the legislature allocated $175,000 grant for small district attorney's offices with small populations. They're still establishing the rules, working on rules, those won't be final and we won't be able to make an application until January 1st. If awarded the grants, uh, the funds can go retroactive to our budget date, in other words, is it October 1st or something? Yeah, October, it'll go back to October 1st after the fact. So, Loretta has been working on the budget, we're, I guess, asking for permission to go ahead and pursue that grant. It will take some dollars off the, uh, the county budget in year, this is a two-year grant, by the way.
It, it, I don't think we can reduce the budget. It, it, I don't think we can reduce the budget to, and the Sheriff's shaking his head no to, I don't think there's a way for us to do that. I, I think I understand what you're saying, is that you're saying we can get what we need to do without imposing on the county's portion of the deal, but we can't actually reduce the budget.
That, that, that incorrect. I missed, I misstated that. There's some line items that, uh, Mr. Raines, Mr. Raines, uh, mentioned during previous budget, budget hearings that were concerns that we were drawing funds from, uh, other, other accounts that, that would be appropriate for the grant fund, because they're specifically for funding the DA's salaries and, and, uh, the potential for hiring additional employees. So that's my understanding here, but you, you did state that correctly. I'm sorry, I...
No, I, I...
Good correction.
Judge, this Senate Bill twenty-two is strictly to fund salaries?
No, it's to buy equipment.
It can buy anything?
Well, no, it's limited for the DA's office.
The DA's office is limited. The Sheriff's office isn't.
Completely different from the Sheriff.
Okay, for the DA, it is only just salaries?
It's to increase Assistant District Attorney salaries, uh, Victim Assistant Coordinator, Investigator, and to hire new staff.
Okay.
There's four, four items that can be used.
Yeah.
Okay.
We want to go ahead and have the funds available, because as y'all are aware, it's hard to get an Assistant District Attorney in here, and I'd hate to put it out there and say, oh yeah, here's the job, can't start until January.
Yeah.
And it might take us that long to find.
And it's, and, and theirs is, theirs is a little bit different, and I'm not, I'm not trying to get our, our apples and oranges confused here. His, the Sheriff's, can do for equipment, for raises, for additional staff, for doing whatever. So he's got a little bit more latitude with his funds than they do, but October one, if we're not paying him the minimum that the state says to qualify, then we can't apply for the grant for them in January, any of it. The DA's office is a little bit different. I don't know when, when does, is your funding mechanisms Jan, in January as well?
Yes, we, we can't even make app, I think, we can't make application for the grant until January.
So those two, those two are the same.
One of the rules has been established, yeah.
And, and to, and correct me if I'm wrong when I say this, the Sheriff is, um, we, we have no idea when, when the funding is gonna be. Comptroller, go ahead and give us an idea. We think it's, it's gonna be January, but it could be February, it could be whatever, but he's gotta be on board October one. The deputies and the jailers that, that fit this criteria would be then retro, am I saying that?
It would be a, a one-time stipend.
Yeah.
That would be from October first to whenever we receive the money for what they should have been paid, and what the, what the judge means the Sheriff's on board. We have to start paying him the increased salary October first.
Yes.
We don't have to pay the deputies and the jailers October first.
That's not the way I read that. But I'd have to reread it again, but that's not the way I read that.
Well, I can tell you this. I went to the, I went to the, um, the car board that I'm on, and the City of County Rural Rights, but anyway, there was ten county judges there, and there was three different opinions on how that was supposed to go. So we're still in the, Jason, do you have any, any more clarification on, on that part of it?
County, the county could, if they chose to start paying everyone October one, and the grant would, would...
Catch up.
Would catch up.
But you're rolling the dice that it actually, you get it, and here's my problem with this. We're, if we do this like this, did you budget five hundred thousand in income?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll, I'll show you that. I had a nice little presentation. I didn't know Brad was going to...
Well, that would be my deal is, is I don't want to dig any deeper than what we're already digging about things, and that's, that's substantial number if we don't budget the income for it already, too.
Yes, and, and that's a good point, but what Loretta had indicated is, is that that will be, all of that'll be set up in the budget, and then it'll be funded through the grant, including the stipend. But there was some discussion, uh, again, by all of us county judges, and there was a discussion about, well, we had one judge that said, no, I'm, he said, I'm telling you guys are wrong. He said, it says that everybody's gonna go October one, and...
Well, Jim Allison and TAC and all the emails round, 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 I think you can do it either way.
Right.
You can pay it, I'll start on October one, where you can catch up when the, when the grant comes through. But the elected officials are probably, uh, that has to start October one because of, of all the notifications.
Notifications, so.
And that's, that's only on the Sheriff's side.
Yeah.
The elected part has nothing to do with the DA port, portion of that.
Right.
So what if y'all apply, you've already started, the county decides to start paying the sheriff his salaries, and then the application process is denied, what happens to his increase?
He gets it anyway. That's, that's, that's the whole deal.
It's kinda like the chief deputy that one time.
Yeah.
That jumped the gun thinking that bill was gonna pass, and it didn't, and then he got the...
No, that, it's all passed.
Ten thousand dollar increase.
Now, that's all passed, but...
Don't know if you'll get the application.
We, we don't know, no, they're...
It's a roll of the dice whether you get the grant.
Yeah.
The application process is gonna be there.
Cause I'm thinking if you go ahead and give him, and then the grant falls through, he's still getting the money.
But I understand what they're saying is with our requirements for publications and putting salaries out there.
You've got...
You've got to go ahead and do, Jason, or he don't get it, and then he doesn't qualify anyway.
Yeah, if, if we don't, if we don't award his Jan, uh, October one, we are disqualified from any of the grant.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I, I don't know.
It's one of those unintended, intended consequences of how they pass and date stuff.
So you can advertise for it, and then pay him or not pay him, or you have to?
You have to.
No, we, he has to meet, he has to meet a minimum, October one.
And it was included in the published salaries.
Oh, okay.
But it, there's a note at the bottom that that is grant-funded.
But this year, this year was the weird year. I, I don't know why, but anyway, they, they, they said, look, the, the Comptroller's gotta do it. It's gonna be January at the earliest that you're gonna get it.
Well, that's when you do your application.
Yeah, but the way, but next year...
Yeah, the way they actually do that, though, it may be April or May before you get the first dime.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you. But next year for twenty-four, we'll make application in October, is that correct?
Do it thirty days in advance of your...
Yeah, yeah. So, so we'll have, after that, it should be on a regular, regular budget, regular funded cycle.
So what happens after two years?
What I was supposed to say, what happens after two years?
If they don't continue?
According to, according to what I've read, and, and like I said, guys, I'm just regurgitating what I, what I, I came in, this funding is back down in the basic part of the funding mechanism for the state. So can they pull it out? Sure they can. But if they do, they're gonna have to go way down in there. It's not like it's an outlier out here that they can just cut off.
Well, and the way Loretta's done it with the two separate budgets, it'd be simple on our end, because if they just don't fund it, the next year, those two budgets will be zero.
Yeah, those lot, that budget line.
Cause you're gonna be funded through that full calendar year or full budget year.
Yeah.
And then, but you'll know well in advance, because they'll have to, if they're going to add to it, they'll have to do it the next state budget calendar.
Or to be legislation.
It will be legislation. They'll have to go through their state budget. So we'll know that they're gonna fund it before we get into our budget stuff into September, and that way, I mean, it, it, it'll be an easy, an easy deal for us, if we just zero those two budgets.
So if they add employees, if in the two years I don't know...
We're gonna let them know the new attorney.
No, the, the, yeah, yeah.
So the increase in salaries...
I, I was thinking you were talking about...
Get the two years up and they don't fund it again.
Asking for an additional, the, the three fifty will have to maintain, cause that's kinda where I was at, is that...
But like, the extra sheriff's money.
Well, once we get past the, the funding for the next, that year, then the next year would be easier to add an additional deputy. Well, it's the same three fifty, same three fifty here, same three fifty here, so that, that only stretches so far.
Once the money's gone, the money's gone.
Yeah, no, it's gone.
The big deal is, is you're gonna be rolling the dice for the first six months of this program. That, that, I mean, the funding's gonna be there, but then you gotta jump through the bells and whistles and the application process to get the money back. So that's gonna be your deal, is you're gonna have six months invested into the program before you ever see a dime of it. Conservatively, six months into the program before you're gonna see a dime of it.
But after two years, and, and the, it's not reestablished the grant fund, then the sheriff and his deputies will roll back to what they were making prior.
But they're gonna be paid out of a separate budget. So with the DA's office, that's what Loretta, once you added that separate budget, so...
They're, they're running, they're running, they're doing the same thing. They're rolling the dice. I mean, that's, that's what they're wanting to do, is they want to get, you know, some more help.
It's like a temp, it's like a temporary position.
Yeah, I saw this, like a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the money's gonna be there, but I'll also, I've never been, never been, never been surprised by what the state does or doesn't do.
The government gives us and the government takes away.
The state's gotta, is notorious for doing it two years, skipping a couple of years, doing it two years, skipping a couple of years. They're notorious for stuff like that.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
On, on grant.
I hear you.
We'd be crazy not to take advantage of the opportunity.
Yeah, no, the money's there, and, and the Sheriff really, really needs it, uh, for his department, but again, I know some counties funded it October one, betting on the check coming from the state, and a lot of the counties, again, big country, um, most of the big country, uh, uh, judges that were there for this meeting said, we don't have the money to fund it.
Yeah.
Uh, October one, so it's, I, I like the way Ms. Key has proposed it, that we, if they fund it in January, everything, you know, everything's going right, then we issue a stipend, one-time stipend each employee, catches, catches them up for the difference in what they would have made, and then it's all good, and it's, you know, the, the budget is, is sound, because it's coming from a different line instead of the general fund. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if y'all wanna see that trail, I can take you through it. Um, on page forty-eight, this is the grants fund. This is the revenue side. Are you there, Judge?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you'll see I've added General Ledger Account zero two five three 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 zero five one zero zero zero, which is the Senate Bill twenty-two grant for the sheriff for three hundred fifty thousand, and zero two five three 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 zero five one zero one zero, which is Senate Bill grant for the District Attorney of one hundred seventy-five thousand. And then if you'll turn the page to page fifty-one, you'll see the dispersment side in line zero two five seven thousand zero one zero zero zero, transfer to general fund, five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And then in general fund, there is a revenue side on page eight, which is General Ledger Account zero one zero three nine zero 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 two five zero zero, transfer from grants fund for five hundred twenty-five thousand. So...
What was the last four? Okay, I, I found it. I found it. Thank you.
So none of that, that transfer will begin taking place until we receive funds.
Yeah. It's a, now, I, I'm not, I don't want to put words in y'all's mouth, but I think what Paul was saying is he's looking for some way to fund this ahead of time, before the January.
If, if at all possible, I'd like to go ahead and, not necessarily for an increase in existing staff, but I would like to be able to post for a new position, cause it may take, and it may take until after January before we get anybody suitable that applies. But if we do find a good candidate, I'd like to be able to get along more.
Technically, if we're writing into the budget, you can do that.
Right. And that's, that, that was why I was wanting to do it. Now, just in case we do have a good candidate.
Well, but in the timing, obviously, we're, we're discussing the budget, but the timing is such that if they hire somebody, this would have been easier to do a month or two ago before school started, potentially. Uh, I, I don't know that, you know, I, I don't want to get in y'all's hiring practices, but depending on the, that employee, this, they may have said, they may not be interested because of school started.
Right.
Hey, whatever. But I understand what he's saying. Before we get to the other issue that we're actually gonna go into executive session about, um, the, um, that's gonna impact their office as well. So anyway, are there any, any questions for the Commissioners about the, about the situation, any comments or anything?
No. It's, it's just strictly a roll of the dice. If you're gonna get the full amount that you ask for, because just because it's also a hundred seventy-five thousand, that don't mean that's what you're gonna get when you apply for it, too. Cause I think a lot of it's predetermined on who applies, how many apply, cause if they go back to the way they've done in the past, they, everything that was not applied for, they, they divvied it out also. So you just never know what you're gonna end up with.
That would be a nice bonus there.
Cause they've done that with CTIP twice. Just at the end of the CTIP, they divvy up every bit of the money, wouldn't, by, by the same formula that they use from the...
But they came, they did come up with a formula for a certain amount, a hundred seventy-five thousand, that was for...
Based on population.
Populations ten to fifty thousand. I think fifty to two hundred was two hundred fifty or three hundred and fifty thousand, something like that.
But they do that, they do ours by, uh, oil production. They'd say it's percentage on the production that you have within the county. That's reasonable. We get two hundred and forty thousand. Stevens County gets one point two million.
Yeah.
And Ronnie's got the same amount of roads in his precinct that Stevens County's got in their whole county.
Whole county, yeah.
Yeah. Now, and, and I, like I said, Sheriff, did you, did you have anything that you wanted to add to, to what we discussed about your portion of that deal? Okay.
I do have one on that. I need to add on page thirty-four. I need to add an equipment line. See if I can get you a budget line. It's going to be zero one zero five six seven zero five seven two zero zero.
There's, there's gonna be equipment?
Equipment, and the amount is going to be eleven thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars eighty-four cents. So that'll bring that total to three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Eleven thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars, I'm sorry.
Point eight four.
I know the, Commissioner Raines, having been at the Sheriff's Office, he knows the, the difficulties and challenges for rural sheriffs, uh, and, and staffing rural sheriffs as well. I mean, that's the, that's the biggest thing this is supposed to address, so. But there's nothing further from Sheriff, uh, anything, Paul, did we have anything for Mr. Llewellyn, so he can go back to District Court?
I think you needed to go into it.
No, that's right. He, we do, we need you to for that.
Judge, do we need a motion on to go forward with the application process and to create the line item and fund?
I think there needs to be a separate agenda item for the application process where it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
And if we'll wait on the line item, I still have others to talk about, but Paul needs to... needs to get back upstairs.
Okay. All right, we, uh, um, we're gonna go ahead and move, uh, an executive session under, and it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that, it shouldn't be that long. We're gonna be under five-five-one-oh-seven-one consultation with attorney. So, uh, this is my first executive session, so. Reconvene, motion by Mr. Maxwell, second, by James, all those, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same side. So we're coming back in at ten forty-two to continue discussion of the budget. I guess these words were out.
Judge, if it needs with the court's approval, uh, for the purposes of getting this part started, I'd be, I'd be more than happy to make a general statement about what, what the DA's office is requesting.
The court, the court in agreement?
Yes, Judge.
Okay. Proceed, Mr. Stevenson.
Judges, I.
Which goes back to our, our executive session.
Correct.
Go ahead.
As, as the court is well aware, we've recently had a deputy who was killed in the line of duty, Deputy David Buzzsucker of the Sheriff's Department, and, uh, based on the last ten days, uh, research and study, uh, I wanna be real clear with the public and the members of the press that are, that are here, we have not received the case, uh, from the Texas Rangers yet. So, I mean, anything that I'm gonna say is not hammered in yet, because we have not received that case in full. We have had preliminary reports, and we should have the final report today. Uh, but having said that, based on the research that we've done and consultation with Judge Hollum and Mrs. Key, uh, we know that there are going to be significant expenses incurred in the prosecution of this case, however it's filed. Uh, right now, I will tell, tell you that we believe that it will be filed as a capital murder, and more likely than not, a capital murder death penalty case. Uh, based on the research that we've done thus far, uh, we feel like it's, it's proper and necessary for us to establish a special budget, which I believe the, the auditor's office is calling the DA's special account, capital murder, something, does that make for that?
It is DA capital prosecution.
DA capital, capital prosecution.
On page twenty and twenty-one.
And there's several purpose, purposes, uh, for this. One, from a statutory perspective, we're required to have this set up, although we have to make emergency line item, item changes, which are gonna be, uh, coming anyway, but we have to have a place to book it. We're gonna try to do, uh, a best guess estimate of, uh, what this may incur, and it will be just that, a, a guesstimation of what it might cost. For the purposes of today's meeting, we're requesting specifically that, uh, the court establish this, uh, new account and, uh, fund it, uh, immediately with fifty-thousand dollars.
Fifty-five.
I'm sorry, fifty-five thousand. Uh, I will tell the court that that is a de minimis amount that will ultimately be accruing through this account.
Basically placeholder.
It's, it's just a place to park, park the funds that are gonna be required, uh, through this long and complicated, difficult situation. Uh, I hate to, uh, attempt to make any estimations at this point, but, uh, I would tell the court and the public that at a minimum, this will cost in excess of a half a million dollars to taxpayers of Eastland County. More likely than not, it would be very conservative to say that we could get this done, uh, in the end. If it ends up being a capital murder death case, it'll be well in excess of a million dollars. And that's over and above. We don't truly have an insurance policy, but we're a member of a collaborative that provides, uh, for defense counsel. Uh, the county's still responsible for expert witnesses on the defense side, and, uh, medical transportation, expert witnesses, uh, psychiatric evaluations, transportation, housing, uh, and the list goes on and on. Appellate, uh, at least two appeals, once the trial is, is complete, assuming there's a conviction. Uh, and, uh, this process can take.
Years.
Years and years.
So, reading into this, what we've had, and not going into what we talked about a while ago, but from a perspective on the budgeting, we're looking at this, in, in reality, not knowing, but in reality, we can safely budget a half a million dollars for an expense annually for this until it's gone through the second appeal.
Commissioner, I think that's, that's probably a very realistic, uh, outlook on what's, what's probably coming. I will tell you that, over the course of the last, uh, ten days, pardon me, my office has been, uh, looking into every grant, uh, possibility. We've talked to Senator Birdwell's office, we've talked to the Attorney General's office, we have meetings pending with the Attorney General's, uh, capital murder prosecution, uh, death penalty prosecution specialist later this week. They have potential resources for grant funding, particularly with regard to small counties like Eastland County. Uh, we're gonna be researching each and every one of those and making an application for every dollar that we can to help the court and the taxpayers of Eastland County to be able to get through this, but, uh, even, even with that, uh, this process will, will be very time-consuming and, and quite expensive. And I'd entertain any questions the court has, or, for that matter, if the court opens it up, I'd be glad to answer any questions of the public.
I mean, we, obviously, there were specific reasons that we went into executive session because of some of the details that, of the capital murder itself, of the investigation, but, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I have no problems addressing. Any concerns from the?
Well, I think.
Anybody that's here.
From our side of it, me sitting on this end of this table, that I don't wanna spend anybody's tax dollars, but I'm not gonna let a guy get by with doing what that guy did.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well.
I concur.
If I could add, add one thing, I've talked to a significant number of, of law enforcement officials, uh, who are very personally involved, and they are all one-hundred percent, uh, that we, uh, carry this to fruition. There is a substantial cost involved, and I think the court now understands, uh, what those, uh, financial obligations are, and I agree with Commissioner. This is hard for me to say.
I know.
For once in twenty-five years, I, I agree with Commissioner Raines one-hundred percent.
Can we make some special note in the record?
Yeah.
That evidently there will be a blue moon tonight.
History's been made.
Maybe one of those red moons. Here, history is.
Well.
It's terrible that we had to have this situation for him and I to agree on something, is all I gotta say.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions for the district attorney?
I just have a second question. When you say new account, are you talking about a new department?
Department, okay, thanks. No, I didn't, wouldn't do that to you.
I don't wanna. I already have sixty-one that counts, I don't wanna go, please. I would love to, but.
We, we, we wanted to be able to track the expenses for the trial.
Yeah, I understand the new, uh, department, I just wanna make sure it wasn't a new.
No, you don't, you don't, no new back.
Thank you.
No, Commissioner Raines made a good, a good deal. I mean, for transparency, we wanna be able to tell the public, this is where this money was spent, and this is how it was spent, but also, if another county that was going through that, we could sit there and print that out and say, "This is what it cost us."
Yeah.
Realistically.
Realistically, this is what you can look at, because it is, I mean, everybody, everybody's in this table knows it's gonna be a financial, I mean, but it's extremely hard to put the dollar above the lie.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, there is.
Sure, I didn't need to go over to everybody's account. I kinda need to know if I need to do that or not.
Uh, for sure.
No, if, if we receive grants, we'll do the same thing and just run it through grants fund.
And then fund it that way. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stevenson, appreciate it. Unless there's any, any more questions for Mr. Stevenson.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
Appreciate it.
To create, establish a new.
It's already in, it's in the budget, it's prepped out.
It's in the proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to go through the rest of the changes to the budget?
Sure.
Because I have several discussions.
No, that's fine, that's fine. We need to have the discussion before we start doing the proposed rate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
I like the way Kathy did hers. I'm trying to keep my mind away.
What about insurance? What else do you have? Two thousand children in it, Mark count.
Oh, I haven't even got that. I have to accrue, and, yeah, don't worry.
Where I spend all my money.
Yeah. I, I'm going to try to do it this week, but I can't make any promises.
So did you move this, did you move the old one over?
I did. If you don't mind. Thank you.
Is my bag a problem?
There.
Smog me over.
I'm sorry, Judge.
Okay, I'm going to start you on page ninety, and this is the health reimbursement account. Um, if you'll remember, the court decided to take a lesser cost, um, insurance coverage for the employees with the increase, when, the deductible is increased one-thousand dollars, but the county's going to absorb that one-thousand-dollar difference. So estimating twenty people are going to meet that one-thousand-dollar increase. Um, I increased the health reimbursement account twenty-thousand dollars. So, um, on the revenues, I just did percentage-wise between the four funds that this is funded through. Um, so line zero-eight-six-three-nine-zero-zero-one-zero-zero, which is gen, general fund, changes to forty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-seven dollars.
What was the last five again? Sorry.
It's zero-one-zero-zero-zero, it's in the.
Okay.
It's the second highlighted line.
Page nine?
Page ninety.
Yeah, I'm on, uh, zero-one-zero-zero, zero-one-zero-zero-zero.
On page ninety?
Ninety. It's the second highlight, highlighted line.
We don't have highlight, we're shading.
It's oh-eight-six.
Oh, it went away when we made copies.
Yeah.
Okay. It's zero-eight-six-three-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero.
Okay, I'm there. Transfer from general?
Yes.
Okay.
That's changing to forty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-seven dollars. The next line, ending in zero-two-zero-zero-zero, which is transfer from Roden Bridge, fourteen-thousand-fifty dollars, fifty cents. The line below, ending in zero-three-nine-zero-zero, is transfer from dispatch, eight-thousand-one-hundred-thirty-four dollars, fifty cents. The line below that, ending in zero-five-four-zero-zero, transfer from, it's courthouse security, two-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-eight dollars. So those four total seventy-three-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty dollars. I also increased zero-eight-six-four-zero-nine-zero-two-zero-two-zero-zero, deductible reverse, reimbursement. The department, four-zero-nine-zero, non-departmental is the header on that.
No, on the same sheet.
Mm-hmm, on the same sheet. That line increases to ninety-seven-thousand dollars. And the administration fees below it, ending in four-one-three-zero-zero, increases to nine-thousand dollars.
What are those administration fees, just a few off?
Um, we actually have to pay, and will be paying through Holmes-Murphy, um, for them to administer the.
They take care of it.
Health reimbursement arrangement account. That kinda sets you up for the rest of it, um, on, and I'm gonna save this page for late, In the first section at the top, zero-one-zero-four-zero-nine-zero-four-seven-zero-zero-zero, which is dispatch support, increases to four-hundred-eighty-three-thousand-three-hundred-sixteen dollars, seventy-nine cents. And that's due to that increase for the health reimbursement arrangement. Bottom section, top line, zero-one-zero-seven-zero-zero-zero-two-zero-zero-zero, which is transfer to Roden Bridge, changes to... Are you there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nine-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-one-hundred-seven dollars, forty-three cents. And I'm going to explain that one when we get to Fund Twenty, which is next, on page If you'll look at the bottom of the first section, or actually, it's the second section, zero-two-zero-three-eight-zero-zero-seven-seven-five-zero-zero, carryover from prior year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the audited fund balance for fiscal year twenty-two was three-hundred-forty-six-thousand, so I'm proposing to carry forward three-hundred of that, which dropped, um, zero-two-zero-three-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero, transfer from general fund, just below it, to nine-hundred-seventy-two-thousand-one-hundred-seven dollars, forty-three cents.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Then on page forty-six. Line zero two zero seven zero 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 dash zero eight six zero zero at the bottom, the very bottom.
Eighty-six hundred?
Yes. Changes to fourteen thousand fifty dollars, fifty cents. On page forty-eight, we've already discussed the addition of the two Senate Bill twenty-two grant revenue income lines. And then on page forty-five. It's not page forty-five. It is page fifty-one. We've also discussed this, adding the transfer to general fund to five hundred and twenty-five thousand, or changing it to five hundred twenty-five thousand.
For the Senate Bill twenty-two?
Yes, for Senate Bill twenty-two.
Okay.
And then on page.
This was a good idea until they had the page numbers on the right. In your light.
I think next year we'll use a three-ring binder.
Yeah.
And just do it that way.
Yeah, that's a whole lot easier to flip through.
And on page fifty-two at the bottom. Line zero two six six nine zero zero four one six zero zero, and this is the ARPA grant funds, professional fees, changes to one hundred forty thousand. First line on the next page, ending in four five seven zero zero, computer software, changes to four hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred fifteen dollars.
Is that the Tyler stuff?
Uh, yes, that is the Tyler.
Is that everyone's?
That, that is.
The grand total of?
The enterprise, jury, and financial.
Okay. And when you say the enterprise, you're talking about the judge's addition, DA, JP?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Then two lines below, ending in four seven one zero zero, Eastland County Water Supply. That should be two hundred thousand dollars. And I have not talked to Steve Gertis.
This forty-seven two hundred?
Forty-seven two hundred?
Forty-seven one hundred?
Forty-seven one hundred.
Okay.
No, yes, one hundred.
Okay.
Sure would help if y'all had the shading.
Yeah.
We'll have to work on that next time.
Yeah.
If you'll go down toward the bottom of the page, ending in four seven eight zero zero, which is Gorman Volunteer Fire Department, that should be twenty-five thousand. And then at the bottom of the page, ending in four nine zero zero zero, other miscellaneous, six thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars, seventy-eight cents. You will go to page sixty-three. Toward the top. Zero three nine three four two zero, thirty thousand, which just says Eastland County. And this is the support the county provides for dispatch. It's increasing to four hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred sixteen dollars, seventy-nine cents. On page sixty-five, very close to the bottom, zero three nine seven thousand zero eight six zero zero, transfer to health reimbursement, change that one to eight thousand one hundred thirty-four fifty. On page sixty-six. Need some tacky finger? In the section that says revenue object three eight zero zero, it's line zero four zero three eight zero zero seven seven five zero zero, that's carryover from prior year. That needs to change to ten thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars, eighty-eight cents. On page seventy-eight. This is also under the section that says revenue object three eight zero zero, and it is line zero five two three eight zero zero seven seven five, changes to fifty-one thousand twenty-eight dollars, thirty-one cents. Then on page eighty-one. At the top. It's line zero five four three four two zero four eight four zero zero, transfers from general fund, changes to one hundred eight thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars, forty-two cents. On page eighty-two, toward the bottom, under department seven thousand transfers, the line ending in zero eight six zero zero, transfer to health reimbursement, changes to two thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars. On the next page. Under revenue object three eight zero zero, line zero five five three eight zero zero seven seven five, carryover from prior year, changes to one hundred sixty thou- oh, sorry, let me do that again, one hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars, thirty-nine cents. The next change is on page ninety-five. Also under the revenue object three eight zero zero. General ledger account zero nine four three eight zero zero seven seven five zero zero, changed to two thousand five hundred sixty dollars.
Mine's going to all different numbers.
It's got all different numbers?
Yeah, because it's ninety-five, I didn't have a ninety-five. Mine stopped at ninety-three, and then it went to one fifty-three.
Your pages?
Yeah.
Yeah, mine stopped at ninety-three and went to one fifty-five.
I'm actually good. For what?
They're, they're.
Are they out of order? They're there, but they're out of order?
Yeah, they're out of order.
I'm good.
It'll take a little while, because they're just skipping around.
Sonia's messing with us.
Yeah, yeah.
Keeping you on your toes. She was. She was down to the wire. Did you find page eighty-five, ninety-five?
Yeah, it's back here in the back.
Does yours have order or out of order, Amy?
Okay, ninety-five.
Yeah, mine's fine.
It's just you two boys.
Yeah.
Playing, playing shuffle.
Do you need that amount again?
No, it's probably.
Twenty-five sixty.
Two thousand five hundred sixty.
Yeah.
Then on page one oh two. Again, under revenue object three eight zero zero, that changes to twenty-one thousand four thirty-five forty.
Thirty-eight hundred?
Yes.
Seven seven five zero zero, okay.
Seventy-seven five hundred.
Yes. Did you get that?
Yes, thank you.
And then I'm going to take you back to the front, because.
Gemma, the cricket.
This is the big, well, I have to do all that to get back to this number.
You're taking your word for it.
On page eight, this is under revenue object three nine zero zero. No, it's under three eight zero zero at the top. It doesn't have the heading. And this is the carryover from prior year, so this is fund balance that it will take to balance this budget from general fund, and that number needs to change to two million two hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred sixty dollars, fourteen cents.
No. No.
And, and just for the court's information, the audited fund balance for general fund at the end of fiscal year twenty-two was four million four hundred fifty thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars. So the plan is to spend half of that on fiscal year twenty-three. But that's at current tax revenue for fiscal year twenty-three.
Hey, Shelby, would you get ahold of Robin Caruth and tell her I don't, doesn't look like I'm gonna make it by eleven-thirty? Please. I don't even know where they're meeting at.
They're meeting today?
Hmm?
For juvenile boys?
Yeah.
I thought it was next week.
No. No, I have it down for today. Is it, Shelby, was that, that was today, wasn't it?
Last night, it was the twenty-first. Has it changed?
I thought it was next week.
No, well, that's suits me. So there's a meeting I don't have to be at today. That's great news.
What are you gonna do?
I don't know. Probably run, skipping around the dirt now. No, I got a guardianship at two-thirty.
I have it both. I have, I put one on the twenty-first, but there's also one in here for today, but I didn't put that one in, so I don't know anything about that one.
That may be the, did I put that in there? It's hard to get good help. All right, thank you. Well, regardless, I'm not gonna be there, so. All right, sorry, Laura, I had to get that.
Okay. So this is where I do my spiel about the snowball of using fund balance, because if we have to use a hundred percent of fund balance in fiscal year twenty-four, we'll have basically one more year of fund balance.
Well, we'd, certainly, we don't want to use that, but all possible. Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
That was a good idea until, like I said, we had to start flipping pages and I couldn't see this.
I used to never be landscaper. It was all portrait.
Oh, that's our new system.
Yeah, our new wonky system. Okay. Any questions for the commissioners for Ms. Key?
Not a bit, for me.
Yes, I guess I did. What number is key to you at?
What number do I have?
You'd recommend?
Well, I will tell you, and I have this number written down. Let it go. I might tell you. To balance the budget without using fund balance, it will take nine million two hundred twelve thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars in tax revenue. And if you have what I gave you last week, the calculations, the estimates, that looks like this.
You have yours on? Or do you need one? Okay.
You'll see that, that falls just below the voter approval rate, which would be an estimated collections of nine million four hundred forty thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars, sixty-four cents. And we need to have the discussion too about the upcoming case and what we're going to use potentially from fund balance that is not even calculated into this.
Well, the problem is, we have no.
We, we have no way to estimate.
We have no way of knowing. I mean, it could be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be costly, but there's absolutely no way to say what's gonna cost us as much.
No way to project it right now.
At this point. Forty-two twenty-six oh eight is the, is the voter approval rate. At that, at that point, that would trigger an election.
If you go above that rate.
Yes.
But that's also figuring in, basically, the last three years of our three-point-five also.
Right, the carryover.
So your carryover, so your percentage of actually going up, if you use that, it's about like twelve or thirteen percent increase in taxes.
Increase in collections.
No, in taxes. Yeah, increase in dollar amount.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, that's not with, I guess, and I'm just, I'm saying this as a rookie judge, that's, just so I understand, I'm trying to make a point here, but that would be the, that would be used in the previous three years that we did not take that amount.
Yeah.
Okay.
Adding all of them together with the current year, so you're looking at fourteen percent, if you did. So you're looking at fourteen percent. If you did three point five times four, you're looking at fourteen percent.
And it's not the whole three point five.
Yeah, it's a percentage base.
How much more would that be on the average home?
The average home is right around eighty-five thousand.
You did three point five times what?
Three.
Times three, right?
I mean, times four, because you're actually figuring in four years. But it's not three point five. It's like three point two, three point one or something.
I mean, you were just, yeah, that's just a...
That's a rough number.
That's a rough number. Well, that scared you when the auditor says that.
Yes, sir, it is, eh?
I should've brought my real calculator.
I don't have a real calculator. I'd let you borrow one. That's the one I use. Hey, do you ever do that?
I dropped it on the hard rocky road.
You've got, is that a screen?
Yes.
Or is that the actual screen?
No, it's a screen protector, I think. I'm gonna go down there and sit and put me a new one on there.
Yeah, that, yeah.
I hope.
Yeah, they put one on there for, I don't know, we just looked at that, I think about forty-five bucks.
Yeah, well, it was.
Yeah. But that's beats.
Yeah, maybe.
You have to put a new one in.
Fifty-three dollars and thirteen cents roughly.
Increase.
On the average.
Eighty-five thousand dollar home at the tax rate of point four two two six oh eight?
Yes.
And that would not trigger an election?
If you stay below that rate.
Below that rate, okay.
But I can say that's a double-digit tax increase.
To fifty-three dollars total on an eighty-five thousand dollar home.
Yes.
Are the, are these numbers on this budget you printed today, are they up to today, numbers, current?
That's...
Yes. Are you talking about the expenditure part?
Can you spend through up to the revenue?
Yes, the May twelfth payroll, which is the last one we did in net data, is not in the expenditures yet. I need to journal entry that in. And then I have some adjustments to do.
So I, I know you just got through figuring that on your deal and stuff, so every, every hundred grand, how much is that?
Okay, give me just a minute and I'll do it again.
Every hundred grand?
Yeah.
To go with that tax rate?
Yeah.
It's forty-two dollars.
Well, that's, that's the ta... Are you talking about the increase on a hundred thousand?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, I'm talking about the increase, yeah.
Well, he's thirty-six ten, so minus forty-two dollars, so around six bucks.
So like fifty-nine bucks.
It's sixty-one dollars, sixty cents on a hundred thousand dollar home.
Yeah.
Or property.
Yeah.
So... So my understanding of meeting with Randy and stuff, on the money we, on the, on the, I hate saying that, the money we didn't recoup, but the, but the, yeah, money left, left on the table from twenty-twenty is fixing to roll off, which is, if I remember right, was like a point three seven.
Yes, the increase that we did not use in tax year twenty-twenty-one.
I thought he said it was twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty.
Because, because it, it rolls off every three years.
Yes, so the unused increment rate for twenty-twenty is three point seven two six three cents.
Point?
Three point seven two six three cents per one hundred dollars.
Three point seven six two cents.
Seven two six three.
Seven two six three.
Seven two six three, I'm sorry.
And that's what will roll off.
But you'll, it'll roll off, but you'll gain, if you went below this year, you'd gain that back. It, it, it's a revolving door situation. If you don't use it, you can use it the next time, or percentage based.
But, yeah, but that would be the... That's the highest one that's rolling off is that three point seven two six three.
All right.
Well, I mean, I'm... This is not a pleasant conversation to have, to have to have, or whatever, but, you know, the bottom line is, we've got... We're not sitting
Well, here's my two cents worth, and the reason why I asked about the number being up today is, right now as we stand, we, fund balance wise, yes, it was budgeted at, at two million, thirty-one, one thirty-four thirteen for this year. We have not touched that yet. We're still a hun- eight hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three point fourteen in the good. And we've got six weeks left, four payroll, five payrolls, six payrolls if you count, I guess, the May. So, are we gonna get to it? Probably so. Are we gonna get to it, to the two million dollars? Not even close. So...
You said two million, three...
Yeah, it's two, two million, thirty-one thousand, one hundred, it's on page eight.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
My thanks.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm trying to...
And so that, that's, that's my deal, okay? I, I, I don't want to deplete it, however, I don't know that it's necessary to go to four forty-two on this deal. Because of the fact that traditionally, if you go back and look, we're, we're, we're break pretty close to even on it. I, like I say, I'm not gonna say that we're not gonna get into it because I do think we will. But we won't get into it to the extent of a million dollars, because we've already collected over half million dollars in revenue that was not budgeted.
How much?
Five twenty-five, nine twenty-four, twenty-eight. So that, that's, that's my deal, is we're getting toward the end of the year, and yes, I do know people spend money at the end of the year to buy office supplies or whatever they want to do.
I don't know how much money you have.
Yeah. But to, to that extent, I, I don't know that we need to do, and I, and, and Loretta and I have this back and forth every year. It's not, nothing new, Dave, for us. On there. But that's my two cents worth. If we, if, if we did the three point five percent, just shy of the three point five percent cap that we have on here, we would generate four hundred sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-seven cents in additional revenue.
One more time, Robert?
Four sixty-two, one seventeen, seventy-seven. And that's...
Which rate?
That's not a rate you've got figured. It's the three, it's actually just shy of the three point five. Because the best I could figure the three point five was going to be, where am I speaking?
The no new revenue rate?
Yeah, the no, not, not this no new revenue rate, but the no new revenue rate if we use three point five percent.
Oh, okay.
Which is it?
Aren't we at three, three six one now?
Yeah, so that's just, just a little bit lower than what we had. If we stayed at the three six one, which is just a little bit above three point five percent cap, would you, which you would be getting into the leftover rates that we have built into that forty-two, it would generate five hundred and three thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and nine cents in additional revenue, just over half a million dollars.
And that's on page one?
Yeah, that's on page one. So my, my two cents, strictly my two cents, is somewhere in, around that rate. And here, here's the thing about that, is if we get the expenditure that we think we're gonna have, that we, that we see on the horizon for this trial, which is, I'm telling you guys, you're talking about multi-year, several years, then we're probably going to have to do this several years in a row just for that expenditure, to plan for that expenditure. So there, there is another reason why I don't think that we ought to go to the forty-two now. Let's stay right about the three point five. And...
What would, what would the... What was it, three six one? Or what do we, we got it?
That's the very front page of this one, James.
Yeah, so the three six one.
Three six one is what we got now.
It's the current rate.
The current rate. Which would, like I say, would generate five hundred and three sixty-two oh nine.
And the diminished?
The diminished rate is...
Three six six?
Yeah, it's just, it's gonna be a little bit more. It's gonna generate, the diminished rate is generating five hundred thousand. I'll throw it off the top. Not counting new, so you're looking at around six hundred and thirteen thousand on there. Six hundred and...
It is. It's the last page.
Yeah, the diminished, you're, you're gonna look at generating about six hundred and sixteen, six hundred and seventeen thousand roughly on there.
Over the voter approval?
Over the voter approval.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I foresee a long-range plan that we've gotta come up with, paper the trial. I do. I just don't think we have to do it all in one year. But that's, like I say, strictly my two cents at the end of this day.
Why wouldn't it be better in your mind, Robert, just stay where we're at right now? Did you already say it?
Well, I, that's what I'm saying, somewhere between the three point, or the three, uh, five and the three six one, three, three five nine, the three six one ratio. In there.
And what the diminished rate is, we're allowed to increase revenue five hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's what the diminished rate is.
Yeah. It's a, and it's population-based, I think, too, or something like that, or...
Exactly.
I forget it. It's a, not everybody can do it.
So after saying all that...
Thirty thousand.
Right, it's a thirty thousand.
Population of thirty thousand.
But that's my two cents. Y'all know me.
You still think it would be in that, Mr. Redd? What you're calculating, using fund balance up? After we're not into it yet?
Um, we are going to use fund balance.
Use it up.
Are we going to use the whole proposed?
Two million?
Two million? No.
But what Loretta's saying is, is if you budget like this, eventually you will.
Right.
And you agree with that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, if, if you continually budget at a fund balance rate, you will eventually use it.
But we're coming out of it at five hundred plus is what I'm at.
Over the voter approval rate. No, the no new revenue rate, sorry.
Yeah.
Over the no new revenue rate.
Don't say voter approval rate, because that's a whole different...
Right.
A whole different deal. We're staying below. We stay below that.
Well, and, and here, here's the thing about that, David. That, that is our voter approval ra- rate if we take the initiative to use the three years in the past. Not the technical voter approval rate for the three point five percent annual cap that we have. We have the availability to use three years backwards because we have not used it. It doesn't necessarily mean we've got to.
Yes, no, I, I, I agree with that. My, my only, here, here's my question. Like I said, being, being the new, new to the court, what's the potential, because the state's already gone back down and said, you know what, you can only do three and a half? What's the, what's the potential for the state coming in and saying, you can't use previous years?
Oh, it's, it's hap- it's gonna happen. I mean, that, that diminished, all that's gonna, that's gonna disappear because we're fixing to be the bad guys on stuff.
Yeah.
The way they're doing the school taxes.
Yeah, so...
I mean, it's written in there for a particular reason, but they're, they're gonna have another headache with the five percent cap they put on their sales because the reason why the Senate didn't wanna do that is because it's gonna directly affect the way they budget their annual, by annual budget because they budget a ten percent property tax increase into their budgets.
So I guess my question is, it's almost like the, and I don't wanna oversimplify this, but it's almost like the, do I take social security at sixty-two or do I take it at whatever?
Here's the...
You're count, you're counting on it that social security's gonna be there at sixty-six or seventy-one or whatever.
But here's, here's the other side of that, David, for, for us sitting here at this table. If we increase taxes this year, we're not increasing them just for this year. We're increasing them for every year forward. So we make an additional five hundred thousand this year. We're gonna make that same additional five hundred thousand next year on taxes.
Okay.
So it is a compounded situation where you got a dollar this year, next year you're gonna have two dollars, next year you're gonna have a dollar and a half. You, you, you're going to get to where you need to be. You don't have to take the one big chunk right at the front because that same thing's gonna happen if you do the forty-two. You're gonna make that extra big chunk of money, but you're gonna make it again next year, and you're gonna make it again the next year. So why?
If the legislature allows us to.
You can make it next year.
Right. Well, no, not, not necessarily, because you're setting the tax rate. So the tax rate directly is gonna be related to the next year, the next year, the next year. So, and this is what always makes her mad because it goes the same way when we go the other direction. Because it's a compounded deal. If we go below the effective rate like we have for the last several years, it compounds because you're losing that revenue not for this year. You're losing it next year and the next year and the next year.
Yeah, I hear you.
So, but it go, it works both ways on gaining or losing the revenue.
Sure.
On it. So this, that's the reason why I look at it like this. If we're, yeah, okay, let's do this and we'll, and it is a hit, and they're going to, it's going to cost a little bit more, but not an eye-staggering amount. And, yeah, and it'll be a, I don't wanna say a slow progression, but it is a progression into that situation. Whereas if we go in there next year and, and we've got the trial coming up and we can see writing on the wall and it's going to be substantial, we go three point five again, okay, now, now we've made five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. We made a million, the next year we're making another million. So that's the reason why on my, like I say, I'm one fat guy sitting on end of this table. That's the reason why I have a hard time going to something like forty-two where we going up six cents when we can go down half a cent and as long as we're relative on what we spend the next several budgets, we'll catch back up. There's, I personally, my...
Unless property taxes take a hit.
Right.
And you're also considering costs are staying level.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Yeah, y- 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 you know...
And they don't.
They don't. And I totally understand that, but they don't for everybody. Not, not just for the county, for the people we're taking their money from. They don't stay level either. But that's my sales pitch. David, you're just getting the first taste of all this with me.
Yeah.
We, we go back and forth like this all the time, every year.
I understand, this is...
You know.
I'm just, I'm just getting coached up on this deal. I wish I was a, a tax expert on this deal to figure out.
Them too, they don't have any clues either.
Well, and I, you know, the, the other bad thing is, is that you know, I, I agree with what you're saying. I agree. I agree with what Loretta's saying, both, i- i- I mean, even though they're a, a little bit opposing, but we, we've got this, we didn't ask for the expense that we're fixing to get hit with.
Correct.
But, that doesn't mean that we can't budget for it. This is what we get paid to do, is to budget stuff, so...
Well, and you have a fiduciary duty to budget for it.
Sure, yeah, you can't just sit there and say, well...
Can't roll the dice all the time.
Yeah, no, and then...
Don't you think with what's coming up, that we need to raise it a little bit?
Well, I, I do, and I think we need to stay between around the thirty-six ratio on it. Because I, I, like I say, James, I look at it like this, that's gonna generate half a million dollars, about there, okay? If, if we look at it at a five-year, four-year, four-year scenario...
Which, which is for clarification, that is based on increased property values.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, th- then, then you're, then, and you're looking at a five hundred thousand dollar annual bill for that, we've got that covered right there for the next four years. Because you're not, do you actually think your property value's gonna go down the next four years?
No, they're not gonna go down, yeah.
So, so...
We hit a recession, it could...
Well, it's, it, yeah, it won't though. I mean, you might see a little fluctuation in some residential stuff, that, that will be it, and the offset's gonna be, I mean, we generating, at that, at, at the rate of, uh, the thirty-six ten, we're generating a hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars of that's in new value, or, uh, well, I don't have a ninety, a hundred and fourteen, three forty-eight twenty-four is in new value. So, and you add that, and you go back and look at previous, it's always been around the six-figure, a hundred thousand dollar mark in new value over the last several years. So, you, you're, you're picking up that additional value, and you're picking up an additional tax increase. I, I just, I just don't see the need to do it all at once, or to have, I mean, and I, and I totally understand what Loretta's saying, because if you do it all at once, it's done, basically, it's behind you. However, that's an awful big hit. But, I mean... That must be awful.
Andy, what's your, what's your thoughts on the deal?
I see both sides, I mean, I hate to say a big hit, but that big of a hit.
Well, I, I don't disagree with Robert about that, I mean, I, I would like to lessen the impact on the taxpayer as much as possible. I'd like to be able to just say, hey, we don't, we don't need any more of your money, but...
That's not realistic.
But it's not realistic, because, you know, the, the, just like every business has got increased cost, our costs have increased in fuel and labor and, you know, paper that goes in the copy machine is costing us more. What about you, James?
Yeah.
You?
I think we should go up to the three six six, really. I mean, it's, it's not gonna be that much more, I mean, it's, but, the deal is, we gotta prepare for the next three or four years.
Right.
Yeah.
What would three six six do for us?
Give me just a minute.
A proposed increase in the auditor's budget by twenty dollars, so she can get a real calculator. Yeah, but I want her, I want her to have one of those, those like this.
I don't recall those.
Yeah.
I think I seen a picture with you.
That was Robert.
That was Robert.
Robert's had that one with the little beads on it.
Yeah.
It will be eight million, two hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars.
Eight?
Three cents. Eight, two, eight, two, four, seven, four, point zero three.
But you're talking about using the de minimis rate, weren't you? He's talking about using the de minimis.
Oh, about using the de minimis, well, that's calculated on there.
Yeah, it's calculated on there.
Eight point two, two nine four maybe. What you doing?
Yeah, it'd be six. Cause it's, the minimum is basically valued, or additional five hundred thousand in collection, plus new revenue, so you're looking at six sixteen, roughly.
So what's the impact to the taxpayer on a hundred thousand dollars at that? They gave you a real one, that you could find it, too.
Yeah, it would be right here.
We didn't really wanna know, we just like seeing you punch on that thing.
I didn't.
Yeah, I did, too.
So on a hundred thousand dollar home, it's an increase of five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Five fifty-seven?
Yes.
On a hundred thousand?
Yes, over current, over no new, you wanted on the, over the no new revenue rate? Let me do that, I did it on the current rate. Just a second.
But that puts us still well below the forty-two?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
At, at the three six six, that's the one you were talking about, right, James? Just so I make sure.
Three six six, five six nine.
James, between the, to, to tell you the way I say it, roughly, underneath current values, not new values, current values, going from the three ten to the three six six is gonna generate a hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one, eighty-three addition.
That's what I had, that's what I had figured right there.
So, if you figure in the other, it's gonna be, give me around a roughly a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars additional, between what we currently are, and going with the three six six de minimis rate.
But we're talking about six hundred thousand?
Yeah, roughly.
It's twenty-four dollars, fifty-nine cents, going from the no new revenue to the de minimis on a hundred, one hundred thousand dollar home.
Twenty-four fifty-nine?
Yes, sir.
For a hundred thousand.
How much was, I mean, what rate was that one?
That's at the de minimis, point three six six, five six nine, on page four.
What about your, brother, we had a little bit of cushion there, I mean, we're not talking about that much difference between what Robert's saying and what James is saying. Uh, if we can find somewhere that we can agree on that, that would sure help our situation with the fund balance, especially with what we've got coming up. And I, and we made the point with the DA, this is gonna be a multi-year deal, so... I mean, I... I'd rather go with the three six, whatever.
With the de minimis?
Yeah. Andy, where you at?
That's what I would go.
Robbie?
I'm with James, three six.
Can you live with that?
Three six, what I, I said, I was gonna tell you, three six to three five nine, somewhere in there, which is right at three six, can't get much closer.
Okay.
On it. I will say this, I'll scream tooth and nail, if I had to use the de minimis again next year, I'll fill this courtroom, um, just because I don't think that's something that they want you using every year, that's not the way that it was established.
No, I, 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 I don't dis- I don't disagree with you, but I think we're in kinda...
I mean, I, I, I don't, I, I, I don't want a dollar amount keeping that guy from getting what he deserves.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the only thing that's in the back of my mind, and, so...
No, I, I, I don't disagree with you, Robert, on any, any of that, and I think, I think we'd be having a whole different conversation...
If we didn't have this situation.
If we didn't have that situation, I really, I really...
I know, I'd have no different mindset, but, but, yeah, I...
Then is the...
Everybody deserves their justice.
Amen, amen, and, and he deserves, he deserves justice, I'm just gonna put it that way.
Yeah.
Okay, so is the motion, the three six six?
Who's making it?
I'll make it.
Make it, Robert?
I'll second, second.
Wait, 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 I gotta read it.
Would you pass that to Robert? Okay.
I move to adopt a proposed twenty twenty-three property tax rate of zero point three six six five six nine cents.
Point three six, zero point three six six five six nine.
You have to do thirty-six point cents.
I thought he did.
You, you did zero.
Point.
Yeah. Point, so it's point three six you're proposing.
Right, right.
No, point three six cents.
Yeah, cents.
Here.
Point.
Read it that way.
Three six six five six nine.
No zero?
No zero.
Okay.
So you just put it with a decimal.
Yeah, okay. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
On math style.
Yeah, so thirty-six point six five six nine cents.
And then, if you'll get everybody to vote?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Who made that second?
I see.
Second. County judge votes aye.
Uh, Commissioner, present one. Present two. Present three. Present four. Unanimous.
And who made the...
Let me just see it real quick. Okay.
Who, who seconded the motion of second?
Frank Shaw.
Frank Shaw.
So it is thirty-six point?
Yes, he just said zero point.
Yeah, I know, that's what threw me off.
That's what it says, I'm mad.
Point six five, six nine, okay, there you go.
Thank you.
I'm gonna catch up here. Uh, we've done that, so discuss, uh, H, discuss, did I miss anything above? No, because we tabled the one, uh, discuss, execute.
Yes, um, on G, the commissioner's court needs to accept the proposed budget, and it's not going to be the one in front of you, I will make the one change and put the tax value in and get that to you by tomorrow.
Okay.
And we might have another change.
Can we, can we accept with the idea that it's gonna be revised?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, Judge.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Maxwell, to accept the proposed budget as presented tomorrow.
Judge, did you vote?
Yes, I haven't voted yet, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same side.
You're making another one for everybody, Mr. Redd?
Should just back the front couple pages, you don't have to make whole budgets, do you?
Um, I will have to for ca- for the, what I file, because it has totals.
Okay.
So you're making a whole budget for everybody?
Um...
In order? Would those be in order?
Well, do our best.
I think they had a card game going on, she shot it.
You would like what?
Now Judge, it was just these two boys, though.
I know.
So they could've messed it up.
It was like eight fifty-eight, and I was, I'm gonna get it.
All right, uh, H, discuss and execute, order change in juror pay, Kathy Jento.
Yes, um, so there's a House Bill two zero one four that sets the rates for jurors, and this is for all jurors. So it says, not less than twenty dollars for the first day or a fraction of the first day person is in attendance in court in response to the process and discharges the person's duty for that day, and not less than fifty-eight dollars for each day or fraction of each day the person is in attendance in court in response to the process after the first day and discharge the person's duty for that day. So, most of the counties surrounding here, surrounding our county, are requesting that the budget be set for twenty dollars for the first day, sixty dollars, cause it's a rounded number for the second day. Chelsea has spoken with Judge Harrod, he is good with that. So that is my request coming to, to you guys, on behalf of myself and Chelsea, which is a district clerk.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and then I also have an order to pay the members of the jury, which reflects the twenty and the sixty, so if you could give Judge Holm the permission to sign that as well.
Second.
Okay. Most of my, Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same side, motion carries, to make it twenty for partial and sixty for full.
Thank you. Let me get you, I have to sign that, Judge.
Okay.
And Kathy, could I get a copy of that order?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll get you one, too. Oh, that's the next one.
Do I need to sign this one, too?
Not yet.
Okay, do I need to hang on to it?
No.
Okay, uh, that was H, uh, aye, amend the juror donation payment information to reflect the new juror pay scale, Ms. Jento.
Can I see that?
You gave it to me.
Okay, since we, uh, you guys allowed the increase on that, then the juror donation form, we'll need to reflect that as well. The last time you guys adopted that was in August of twenty twelve. So the, the organizations where the donations can go to are remaining the same, the only thing is the upper part, uh, to reflect twenty dollars and sixty dollars. So that does not require a judge's signature, we just need to amend the form. And that's for, um, county court and for district court.
I'll make the motion.
Do they have one for JP's also?
I'll second.
I don't know what they do.
I don't either.
Cause I don't have them very often.
Yeah. So the motion was, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I made it, James, second.
Okay, motion by Robert, second by James, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
For all courts?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, for all courts.
Thank you.
And J, report on formation of salary grievance committee, Ms. Jento.
It's a mute, but I promised you guys that I would report back to the court. We have only had, one, two, three, four, five, except, just serve. So if we did have one, we'd have the same issues we did, did last one. But, it's reported, so we never did get a committee form.
Okay, so there's no committee?
No committee.
Okay. Uh, K, request for county clerk staff to be paid overtime from county clerk records management funds.
Yes, the monies are budgeted in my records management fund for overtime pay, and I'm just asking that my staff who works overtime, uh, be paid all that fund through the end of the calendar year. And I'll field questions.
I'll make the motion, we do it.
Motion by Robert, second by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign.
Thank you. Okay, next.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to pin Rex down, I have a question for him on guardianship. Uh, request for county, we did that one. Uh, approve reserve deputy sheriff bond, Kathy Jento.
Yes, we have the bond of, uh, Michael Hetrick, and he has done everything he is supposed to for a reserve, uh, bond. So we just need the judge to approve that by his signature.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion by Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr. Crenshaw, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. And I'll sign this real quick. Okay, so, uh, M, discussing consider an act on Superior Vision benefit renewal and addendum I to group contract between Superior Vision Texas and the county of Eastland, Ms. Key.
Um, this is the renewal, this is a, an employee-paid benefit, it's no cost to the county, the rates are the same, we just need to sign a new contract and addendum.
Did the judge sign already?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign.
You'll sign mine also.
I thought she was bringing pizzas. Loretta just looked over here and told us all that she's bringing pizzas.
She thought that was funny. Uh, M, discussing consider entering into an agreement with Tower Technologies and Research Texas, Ms. Jento.
Yes, and I am presenting on behalf, half of Chelsea, uh, she is not here, cause she has a funeral to attend to. But what we found out, once we started going through the tower, um, filing from E-file and taking it through Odyssey, that when the, when we done it through the task queue of Odyssey, then the attorneys were not getting their copies in return, without going through the Texas E-file. So in order for them to get their copies back showing that they were accepted by the court, we have to enter into an agreement with Research Texas. It's no cost to the county, it's just a formality. So, um, as much as I'm against Research Texas taking our profits from the county, there's ultimately no way around it. Um, so I'm asking that, uh, these be executed, so the attorneys are able to get what they need through.
It's just, it's just a pa, it's a, it's a paperwork deal.
Yeah.
There's no cost, there's no.
Workflow, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a, it's basically an authorization.
To let Research Texas.
To let Research Texas notify those attorneys, which, who knew that we would even have to do that, but that's a whole other deal, so. Motion by Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr. Wilson, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign.
And this is to allow as well.
To allow.
The judge to sign. Thank you.
There you go. Uh, C, or, oh, excuse me, discussing considering direct service agreement between telemedicine and Lyric.
It's telemedicine, Lyric, and the county. Um.
Cutting up the, uh?
Yeah. Um, yes, uh, this is the agreement for the telemedicine benefit for employees, um, Brad Stevenson has reviewed it and said he didn't see anything wrong with it, other than the interest rate, which is six percent per month until the principal and accrued interest is paid in full. Uh, we pay these monthly, so that shouldn't be an issue.
I'll make the motion, we.
Motion by Mr. Rain, second by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. He has killed me. Motion carries. There's yours back. Uh, five, budget, right, we've done five. Uh, P, emergency amendments.
There are none.
There are no emergency amendments. Okay. Motion to adjourn, second by Mr. Maxwell. You, you go with us adjourned?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I thought she said so.
Yeah.
I said, thank you.